Good last scheduled item on the agenda tonight's first line, Conifer Cove subdivision will be at the east end of Conifer Cove Lane, in which the road applicant Grove Underhill LLC is requesting preliminary final subdivision site plan approval along with a public hearing associated with the creation of nine lots for construction of eight single-family residences and an associated stormwater management facility and a 5.55 acre parcel located in an R3 single-family residential district under sections 269-11, 296-20, and 350-12 of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Fred Shelley from VME Associates representing the applicant Grove Underhill LLC. Also with us today are Mitchell Brodsky and John Bell from Grove Underhill, also Abby D'Angelo from VME as part of our design team. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approvals for this project, which was previously before the planning board for a sketch plan hearing in December of 2023. The project is an eight-lot, single-family residential subdivision located on 5.5 acres. It's located on the west side of Webster Road. It's east of the dead end of Conifer Cove Lane, where there's a temporary turnaround, and it's north of and adjoining the Webster Conservation Area, the Bird Sanctuary Trail. The project is currently vacant and includes a seasonal growth vegetation, and the applicant proposes conventional development of the property meeting the underlying residential R3 zoning requirements as suggested by the planning board during the sketch plan review. The development will include, as I said, eight single-family lots. One parcel will be, is proposed to be conveyed to the town of Webster for a stormwater management facility, and then there's also the public road connection and extension that will connect Conifer Cove Lane on the west side of the project to Webster Road, New York State Route 250. The roadway access point on 250 does meet the required site distances, and the applicant is underway with the coordination and permitting with the New York State DOT. Also included with the project is the extension of public utilities, including public sanitary sewer, which will connect to Conifer Cove existing sanitary sewer, water main connection, which is under the jurisdiction of the Monroe County Water Authority. There will be a connection in Conifer Cove right of way, as well as a connection on Route 250. Lastly, there will be a proposed stormwater maintenance area and stormwater management practices, which will include the construction of a dry pond, bioretention area. Both of those practices are proposed to meet the New York State DEC requirements for green infrastructure and the stormwater permitting. And then there will also be site public santera storm sewers installed within the right-of-way throughout the site to collect site stormwater runoff and direct it to the stormwater facility. The design of the project is intended to comply with town and state requirements, as I mentioned, with the stormwater design requirements. And the site runoff generally will come into the site either from the west, from the two properties on Conifer Cove Lane, and then also majority of the site runoff that's coming from offsite is coming from the Sanctuary Trail. Site drainage is generally contained within the development area, and the runoff will be collected by storm sewers and directed to the facilities where it will be treated for water quality and quantity. It will be discharged at rates that meet or reduce under existing conditions. Plan sets also includes a landscaping plan. Lot four of the project, which is adjoining on the south side of the road, adjoining State Route 250, includes a proposed vegetated bird for buffering from the state road. There is landscaping proposed in and around the stormwater facility, further increasing the buffering from the site. And the design also includes a general lot landscaping theme of two trees per lot, and the developer plans to coordinate the individual plannings as provided, based on placeholders, and the final locations will be coordinated through construction, the home construction. One last item on landscaping and vegetation is that the developer will also look to preserve select trees within the site where it's available, if it's a significant tree, or a tree in good health and the grading of site disturbance will allow for preservation of those trees. The project will require review approval from the Monroe County Department of Public Health for the proposed water main and sanitary sewer extensions. Requires approval from Monroe County Water Authority for the water main extension, and then the DOT also has the permitting process for connection of the subdivision street to State Route 250, as well as the water main connection to the existing utilities on State Route 250. The applicant will continue to coordinate the agency review approval throughout the town's approval phases as well. The applicant has received comment letters from the residents of Conifer Cove and also the town engineer recently. The applicant has provided a response letter to the neighbors that was copied to the town for the town's file, and then will also provide responses to the town engineer's comments after this meeting. Both the neighbor letter and the town engineer letters included comments on the anticipated traffic within the site. Not necessarily whether or not there'll be a large generation of trips from the proposed eight lots, it's more of a consideration to potential changes in the distribution of traffic between the existing development to the north of the property and the property itself. We've been in contact with town staff, and we're working to refine the scope as far as determining the scope of that study to figure out and come up with some anticipated distribution for the project. And then we'll continue to work with the town as that as we come up with more information. We're also commenting both in the town engineer's letter and the neighbor's letter that requested the applicant to consider the site runoff. We do acknowledge that there are some areas that have saturated soils on site. Just in regard to this, we've proposed our stormwater management facilities again per the DEC regulations. These are intended to reduce the runoff from the development site and it will discharge it at rates fat or below existing conditions. The site discharge is at the northwest corner of the project into an existing swale, which leads to stormwater pulver within amusement to the town of Webster, and that's located on property at 1291 Foothill Circle. Developer also views the project location relative to the Sanctuary Trails and the feeling feature and desires to preserve as much existing vegetation along that south line of the project where it adjoins the town's property, and will work with the applicant as far as identifying any significant trees that should be retained in there. Generally speaking, on our plans, we have proposed a swale along the back property line, and we'll look to increase that landscape buffer as much as we can while maintaining the swale to provide proper drainage for the lots. Lastly, we did receive correspondence from the town today, which raised the question of whether or not this project would qualify, the proposed project would qualify as a type one seeker action. We're not aware of any recent or new seeker regulations or revisions recently, and we are confident that the project would be considered an enlisted action under secret. We do acknowledge, though, that the State Department of Health has issued letters recently, and I believe it was in February of this year, which indicated realty subdivisions qualify as a type one action. However, that type one action is included within the list that's maintained by the New York State Department of Health. As that's within the state's list of that, just a couple of things to keep in mind with that is that number one is defined in the New York State DOH code, not the secret code. The New York State Department of Health is not an involved or interested party in this project, as the realty subdivisions are typically taken care of through the town's subdivision code 296 and also with the Monroe County Department of Public Health. This is further supported by the distribution of the DOH letter to Maine, Ontario, and Yates Counties only, which each of these counties or none of these counties have a local or a countywide health department. So in those cases, the New York State Health Department addresses seeker, and they have their own type of list. We have prepared a long form EAF as requested by the town, and we're happy to provide that to the town tonight. However, we do not believe that this would be considered a type one action under the secret regulations. So with that, happy to entertain any comments or questions on the board as we go through this.
Well, we had to see some comments from neighbors at Conifer Cove. We had meetings with you guys in the past here. There was a lot of concern about traffic coming from Holly Road down Balsa Lane and making that cut through, and we kind of just breezed over it. And I spent a little time looking at it and understanding it better, in my opinion anyways. And as I go through, I was looking at, talking to the highway superintendent, because generally when you got a hammerhead like that, the intent was for that road to go through. That was the intent of this thing. But looking at this, I, in my opinion, I think highway superintendent is okay with it the way it is, meeting it as it is at it. And my feeling is for these eight homes, they're rentals, they're going to be around the units. That's what I heard last time I was in.
Well, that's not quite accurate, Mitch, like. We don't really know what the market is going to bear. We have to use the microphone. My name is Mitchell Brodsky. We are still exploring the possibility of renting houses, but it's not our intent to rent all of the houses, and we don't know when the market will bear at that price level.
Again, back to what I was, my thought on this for these eight homes is make their private drive and get at it same as Conifer Cove. You can make that a private road, make it, I don't know, make it a, it wouldn't be a dedicate, just make a private drive and leave it as a little complex of its own. I think that's, that's my, highway superintendent is okay with this traffic. I can see that as being a serious difficulty. Somebody brought that up, I remember, at the last meeting, and I thought, well, you know, but then after looking at it, yeah, I can see that where it possibly be. And how long is Conifer Cove there?
It's 1990.
So 1990, so, yeah, they've seen it.
Thirty-four years.
And I'm into this, right?
Yes. We chose that lot for a reason.
So it's not public, county, yes, I'm here.
That's my thought at it. But you know what? It is a public hearing, so we'll open it. If anyone else has nothing to speak, just give your name and address. Give it to me. Give your name and address.
Isabel Kaplan, I'm at 1278 Clear Pond Lane, which is on the other side of the Bird Sanctuary Trail, but as we all know. I would just like a clarification of what you were talking about, about the dead-end street. Are you proposing that to have a circle at the end and one having to go through?
No, there would be nothing. At Conifer Cove?
Yeah.
No, that would stay just the way it is.
So how could the houses?
Nothing. This new subdivision possibly could have, would have nothing to do with Conifer Cove. It'd be separate, parcel.
But are you saying that a road would cut through and intercept 250?
No.
No.
No, I'm just saying, Conifer Cove would stay exactly as it stands right now.
It is.
The new development would have a private drive of whatever, more like a private drive, it would have a turnaround, and just for those eight houses, it would be separate going out to 250.
Well, I guess I'm still confused. When you say go out to 250, do you mean that one could, could be at the corner of 250 in this new extension? Or you're saying that traffic would have to go back west and then?
No, no, there's nothing to do with that. The eight homes, wait, look at it right there, there it is, right there.
Yes.
There's eight homes.
Yes.
Okay, they would just go out and out to 250.
Oh, so there would be access to 250?
They would exit on 250, because nothing, they would not be connected.
So you're saying only this parcel would be connected to 250?
Yes.
People living here would not be able to?
Right. Unless you want the road to go through.
Another question, the stormwater management facility, is that, will there be pumps?
You have to use the microphone, back to the mic.
Sorry. The stormwater management facility, is that involved pumps and noise and any kind of activity like that?
Just, just a button.
A pump? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, sure, yes, we'll.
Good evening. I'm Cecilia Robello. I live at 1291 Foothill Circle. I have not heard about whether you are dynamiting for basements, so please tell us that. I have a few questions, so I'll stay here until they answer them all.
Wait, what is the question?
Are they dynamiting for basements?
Okay, you ask the board, you don't ask the applicant, just the correspondence. What are the questions? Any other ones?
There's wildlife out there. Has the DEC been contacted? It's the time where the fawns, the foxes with their kits. Have they contacted the DEC to decide when would be an appropriate time to start?
And is there a requirement, ma'am?
Well, it might not be a requirement, but we live on this earth. And I would like to understand more about the drainage. I went back when they were doing the perk tests. We didn't have a large snowpack this year. I'm sure they have the figures. I'd like to know if they extrapolated for the drainage for when we have a normal snowpack and rain and when it's above normal, because right now that land floods my backyard. Those are my questions. I hope they, three of them are answered.
Generally, this subdivision like this, the applicant builds it, and then there's swales, drainage pipe storm sewer running to the pond. That pond is engineered, it's not, there's a big hole, and so here's the pond.
I understand that.
That's engineered to take care of what the flooding would be in this situation with the residents, with the appropriate surface that would be there. That's how that's controlled.
I understand, and that's why they did the perk test to figure out about the water. But this was a abnormally drier year. So I don't want them just using those numbers for engineering for this year, but extrapolating those numbers for when we have regular snow and rainfall and when we have above regular snow.
They base that on a hundred-year storm. That's how it's based.
Okay, well, I didn't know that. That's my assumption.
That's what they do. They base that on a hundred-year, you know, rainstorm or a really big storm layer, which we get probably two times a year now.
Okay.
You know?
What about basements?
That's how it's based on.
What about basements and what about dynamiting?
Okay, dynamiting, I would have to defer that, but I don't think there's any reason for dynamiting there, sir?
No, and I can answer from here. We advanced our test bit, it's below 10 feet, so, you know, that's a typical depth of basement, so we did not run into any bedrock.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any more?
My name is Greg Michler, and I live at 1271 Conifer Cove Lane, and I've been there since 1990. I was like the third or fourth household on the lane. I just wanted to comment on your proposal that we keep the dead-end street exactly the way it is today, and I think that that is an excellent idea, because we've been living essentially, and people have bought houses essentially on a dead-end cul-de-sac-type street, and, you know, to take it through the 250 just presents a whole host of problems. We'd have no traffic. It's a nice straight road, so, you know, people tend to go faster when it's straight. The rest of the development, north of us, has all curves in it and stuff, so that's just an issue that I guess I would like to reinforce, is that I really like the idea of if you're gonna, if you're going to take those eight homes and just put them right on to 250, and that would be it, there would be no through traffic, that would be it. There was an original, there was just one request, there wasn't the original plan, well, actually, I don't think that might manage. No, it doesn't. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who should speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, ma'am. Thank you for the time. My name is Mark Nicholson. I live at 1274 Clear Pond Lane. I have clear view of this. I'm also chairman for the village zoning and planning boards. So I've been through this once or twice. I've taken a close look at this. This has two issues for me. I think you've addressed both of them. One, you told, what it looked like in the plans here was that there was going to be a connection to Conifer Lane. What I'm hearing now is that there's not going to be a connection to Conifer Lane, but we are going to still, we're going to put eight houses to exit out onto 250. That one I kind of, and I have to use that myself on a regular basis, there's anywhere usually from six to eight cars waiting to get out onto 250. Why wouldn't we turn this right around and take it back in through? And I think the name of the road is Miltree. That's one, that's just one idea that I have. If you're going to limit it to two-eight, I'm not sure how that works. The other, the other one is, this is a, this is a cheap counting, let's say. I did this from my back porch, but there's anywhere between 75 and 150 people that use that Bird Sanctuary Trail. What we've done the end of this, and I think the original plan I saw either took the trail through or didn't go through, and I've looked at some zoning maps, and it's not clear to me, but there's something going on there, and the state has put in a road or a connection between the Toyota Trail, or whatever they called the one in Xerox, I apologize, and the Bird Sanctuary Trail. So that thing runs around North Potts Park, through the Bird Sanctuary Trail, and then over to the Toyota Trail, and all the way over to the rec center, and turns around and comes back. What I haven't heard is confirmation that this board has decided this is the end of the development.
Really? Listen, you have to do the, well?
Well, what I'm saying is, where else do we go? Take a look at the maps. You've got maybe 100 feet.
Are you talking about Webster or?
I'm talking about Webster. We can make a decision on what we zone that, and we can also make a decision on how many more houses we're going to put back there. I don't know if you've got any room for anymore, and what I was hoping the board would do is stand up and say, we don't have anymore. We need to go to the zoning board, go to the planning board, go wherever we need to, and talk about rebuilding this.
I have totally confused, you've got me totally confused.
And by the way, I can help you with that, but?
No, I don't think I need help. I've been here 48 years. I don't think I need any help with this.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. This piece of property has been there. Anybody could have bought it. It's just a separate parcel of land. It's zoned residential. The developer is proposing residential. End of story. It isn't confusing, and it isn't anything to do with Bird's son with Sanctuary or anything. Doesn't impact that whatsoever. Now, if I understood you right, you didn't want any more cars going out onto 250? Nope. So then, okay, so then what we'll do is we'll open it up, so those cars will all go up through Conifer Cove and out the other way. Is that correct?
That was, that was an option. I don't know what the way it is. I appreciate your comment.
There is no other option. There is, look at it. Tell me how you, what would you do with those eight houses?
Well, I would take them right into Conifer Cove. It's eight houses. How much traffic is that going to put out and really stop it?
And likewise, why not put those eight houses? Not very much traffic, you said, on 250.
We'd do that by building.
I appreciate your comments. Is there anything else you want to give us?
Apparently not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should come up? Yes, sir.
I have some questions about Jason Green, 1259 Foothill Lane. Can you just tell?
Say us your name and address.
Jason Green, 1259 Foothill Lane.
Sorry. Can you just explain the process, how it's going on from here, what the next steps are?
Yeah, right now, I mean, I'm just making a suggestion. I don't even know what the board wants to do. If there's still want to connect it, I don't even know.
Okay.
My thought was just to eliminate the problem, guys have been there forever, why change it, leave the road as it is, and just make those eight houses go out onto 250.
I only speak for my family. I think we would be on board with that. I don't know how that's?
Well, anyway, that's, no, there, because the board's got to decide.
Understood.
But the process would be, this is, this would be a sketch of it, you know, they're looking for preliminary and final. I don't believe we're ready to do a preliminary and final.
Okay.
And so.
My only other comment is if developer would like to talk to some residents and have some of our input offline, we'd be open to that too. Just sit down and just agree on that offline.
You want to hear, I'm sorry, you want to hear?
No, we just, I wanted to make, we made it clear that we'd like to sit down with you too.
Totally. Yeah, I guess.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Any more answers? Yes, sir. Oh, yes, you're welcome. You're welcome.
My name is Hugh Lee. I live at 1290 Conifer Cove with my wife, Grace, and I, first, let me say I appreciate your opportunity to open this up on the floor. I also appreciate the communication we've had, but I most appreciate the suggestion that you just made, Mr. Chair. Because I think that can solve.
That's, that's only a suggestion.
I suggest it would be a consideration, and I would hope that you would all consider that, because I think it takes care of many of the issues you saw in the letter, as well as some of the concerns I personally have, ranging everything from the traffic, that sounds, that problem, to issues I would have in terms of, you know, rental, changing the potential character of our communication, of our community, because of the transition issues, any concerns I have over the retention area. I think that the traffic area more than overcomes those concerns that were in the letter. So I would speak to some of my fellow neighbors that support any discussion you have further, and encourage you to consider strongly going into 250 as your exit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is anyone, please, anyone, who do you want to do?
I think your ideas.
Tony, that's a win-win for everybody. It's a win-win for the people of Conifer Cove. It's a win-win for this particular development, because they're not going to have tons of cars driving through that as well. This is, you know, that's right with me. Just have me on that.
Okay, so for the applicant, then I'll start with, before we do that, so, yes, we have the rest.
Isabel Kaplan, 1278 Clear Pond Lane. Can you please talk about whether there are?
Also, they have a microphone, please.
The implications of rental properties versus residential owner properties. What, I don't know anything about what restrictions there might be or what requirements there might be, and I just have never encountered that thing. My other question is, if you, if you make this short road that goes from 250, only the five or six or eight houses down, is there going to be a turnaround so a garbage truck can come in and then, you know, get out again? This is a dead end, right?
That would be same as Conifer Cove.
Yeah. So it's, so it's wide enough for a garbage truck?
Design trucks to be able to.
Okay. I'm just curious about, you know?
Unless you look, you know, you want to turn around on the driveway, they can do that.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I'm just kidding. No, I said, unless your driveway is there, you could make, they could turn around, let them turn around with your driveway. I'm just kidding.
You're my kidney, your kidney. You're not kidding, you're kidding, yeah. Okay, so can you talk about the difference between rental property restrictions versus ownership restrictions?
If they build the homes and the applicant wants to rent them, he has the right to rent them. It's like you have your house, if you wanted to rent it, you could rent your house, right?
I don't believe so, not in my neighborhood.
Why?
I don't believe so.
Anybody can rent their house, if it's a single-family house, like...
I don't think that's true.
The only way that there could be a restriction, a restriction to that effect is if it's in a deed as an exception.
Exactly.
So now, if the development said, we don't allow homeowners to rent a property, you buy a property, you're buying accordingly.
Right.
But that's not the norm. The norm is, if you own a property, you certainly got the right to rent. And these are going to be new construction, and at the cost of what it is for new construction today, a rental on a house like that would probably be $3,500 a month.
Well, you know, that may not be an issue for Cecilia, but that's not my concern. My concern is if there are other factors that would, that would be positive or negative for the neighborhood. That's all my, that's my concern, and I don't know what the rules are for the town.
Okay, well, appreciated, we'll have to look into that.
Thank you.
Wendy Jones, I live at 760 Webster Road, I live right down from there. A big concern is left-hand traffic turning into these drives. Right now, what we get is Belle Arbo's right there, people are waiting to turn into Belle Arbo, cars are going off the shoulder to go around, especially at high five o'clock, peak traffic times, now you're going to have another street on 250 with people turning left, waiting to get in, and that was my concern, is this many streets that people are trying to turn into, and these cars are just flying down 250, it's pretty scary sometimes.
I agree, I...
So I'd like to just put that out there.
Look at the other side of it, though, if the road was, I mean, it is durable, that's a given.
Yep, I know.
But now, if we connected it through, can you imagine how many more cars would be going down there?
No, I understand that, but I was, yeah, I was hoping like a dead end.
I mean, that's at this point.
Yeah, well, that's what I was hoping, I just wanted to put that out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I'll be quick, can you guys address some of this stuff? My name is Pat Stevens, I live at 1291 Conifer Cove Lane, directly adjacent to this property. I think what you put together addresses most of my concerns, our biggest concern was the connection to 250. Now, I did throw a couple of numbers together, it mentioned the straightaway and the speeding. I took a look at all the connections to 250 all the way down through. The longest one, other than this one, that was proposed unless the board takes your solution, was about 650 feet. The straightaway section off 250 with no intersections and no curves for what's proposed here is about 1,300 feet. So that's across about 20 streets that connect to 250 with Conifer. So this would be twice as long of a straightaway than any other street that's in town, and I'm concerned to tell you that the speeding issues that would be major, so obviously what you proposed would address that. Then just to talk about the rental use, new construction that instantly goes into rental, certainly within everybody's right to do, put a single-family home into rental if the market supports it, which they could very well make, but what you can't do in that situation is have public utilities to those properties, the roadway, the drainage, the stormwater facility. If you're renting, you're a rental community, you're renting properties that you're developing new, that stuff should remain private, not be maintained by the other tax payers if you're running a profitable business with these new developments. Mostly, there's something you addressed, the takeaway of the connection, addresses most of my other concerns or major concerns anyway. You know, we hope to continue talks with the developer about possible purchase of property, talk about no way you'd be able to purchase it, we'd be a tribe, but apparently that's not something folks are open to, so we hope to progress that, but otherwise, what you're proposing, what you mentioned, would mix all the stuff.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it. Yeah, you're right, that would be a racetrack. Also, lane all the way to 250, you want a straight shot going down to 250.
Sam Carpon, 1278 Clear Pond Lane, why haven't you considered the possibility of not having a connection from 250 to this new development and forcing everyone to drive all the way around? That would also alleviate the traffic, but would not have another entryway into 250. Is that a possibility as well? I'm saying that to keep the dead ends, you cannot, you cannot enter from 250, the cars in the new development have to go out the same way as the cars that are, that the houses are currently in that development. So keep a tree, keep up on it there.
Yeah, that's what we, that lady brought up before, that gentleman.
Would that be an equally solution?
No. Again, as Mr. Feeney, as you said too, which is a good point, that would, that would definitely be a racetrack where through the car's, those, that straight shot through.
Why don't they go through?
Why would you want, why would you want to connect them into there? I mean, these houses, these people, where do you live, I'm sorry?
I'm on Clear Pond Lane, so on the other side of the...
Well, you're not even near there.
No, I'm not, right, that doesn't affect me that much, I'm just...
Okay, so I understand what these people are saying, they live there.
Okay, I would suggest that maybe they would like a different way of looking at it, because there's a complaint about cars turning from 250 into this area, and the cars that speed past you, it's kind of...
Just let moving, the way this is moving is going through, and you'd be dead end at 250, now that would handle, you know, that would not, definitely be that good plan.
You just be extending that road a little bit to Conifer Cove Lane, you just extend it out a little bit, but have it dead end before 250.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, I don't think that would be best, but I think that would be a subtle thing. Okay, thank you. Anyone else who should come?
Steve Miniman, 1279 Conifer Cove Lane, just want to thank everybody here today, and just wanted to agree with your suggestion.
So I would take the consensus is what we're talking about, keeping it separate? All right. In that direction, you guys want to think that way? All right, so, all right, go ahead, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and on behalf of the applicant, thank you to the public for your comments and then putting up the project. The applicant actually would, would consider that disconnection from Conifer Cove, however, the developer would prefer to maintain that road as a dedicated roadway, so that, one of the things with that is if we go to a dedicated roadway, then if we recall back from the sketch plan, we presented a cluster development, and then also the conventional, we went conventional based on, you know, the feedback we're getting at that time. I guess I would, I would ask the board if they would be open or to reconsidering the potential for cluster development, so that number one, we can maintain a public, a dedicated road, but one of the things that I see is, could be problematic, is if we have a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead turnaround at the end of that, that's dedicated to the town, we're going to do some lot areas. Our lots right now, we've got them at minimum lot sizes right now, based on the current code, so that would be one of the reasons for pursuing the convention or the cluster development.
Understood.
So we would, we would hope to get our board's support.
What would they give you, maybe another couple of lots in there?
Pardon me?
What would they give you, another couple of lots?
Well, no, so our original submission for the proposed cluster, based on code and the calculations that are required through the town code, it allowed nine-lot development.
So you give another lot?
Yes, but some of the feedback that we were getting from the town was they wanted to maintain the stormwater maintenance all in one parcel, so while this project does meet the size requirements for nine lots, we did lose that one building lot for the stormwater management area, so you know, that's some of those things that we need to keep in mind if we're, if we're changing those layouts or changing the configuration of the roadways. Another consideration that doesn't happen very often, but maybe just a consideration to the town, a hammerhead turnaround takes up less room than a conventional cul-de-sac does, so that might be another ask through the conventional or the cluster developing is perhaps to get some waiver from that. I have to admit, I'm not too keen or too up to date on the town's development regulations that pertains to hammerheads versus cul-de-sacs, but we would like to explore that.
I would suggest maybe as getting together with the highway superintendent, and see how that would work out. I understand what you're saying, a hammerhead would be basically the same as it's kind of proposed.
Yes, and we can, we can pull that back away from the actual West Hurley Bounder Lane.
I wonder if there would be a way to connect up enough, one hammerhead between the two parcels? You know what I mean?
Then how would they, how would they go the same way?
We'd have to have the engineers and stuff look at it to really analyze it properly. We'd be happy to sit with the town or perhaps even PRC, PRC meeting.
You know what I mean, would they have a hammerhead at the end of their school? That, I don't know how it would work, but we were glad it skipped one. Yeah, if you have to be straight through, yeah, you're right. All right, a hammerhead, the town will be okay with it, that's something. You know, you could tell, yeah, I mean, cul-de-sac in there, kind of ridiculous, actually. All right, and as far as being a dedicated or private home, those are things you'd be happy to get together and figure out how and what, with the requirements you're in. Again, a question about... Do you need one more, you get what, another lot in there, maybe?
Well, there's, there's potential, but I mean, we would start with what we have now and work from there, so you know...
With cluster-type development? It's a small, small piece, and I mean, cluster really doesn't make it any different than what you folks have as far as size, it's just a totally separate entity.
What does that mean, a cluster?
I don't see a...
Well, there were a smaller lots, there's smaller... You don't see a benefit to it, no? All right. All right, we'll, see what you come up with.
Thank you, yes, and we can try to the town and if we're, if they work for this evening, then we can compare it on the town's side.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.